Good morning, everybody. It's 8:30. We'll call this morning this meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order for Tuesday, October 12th. And our first item would be the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay.
Motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carried. Citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard this morning on items not on the agenda? Any citizens to be heard? Anybody online?
No, Mr. Chair.
All right. We'll move on to the approval of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve bills and vouchers.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kaylee, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carried. Approval of minutes from September 28th.
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ebinger, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carried. At this time, before we go into our 8:35 item, we're going to do some flu shots here this morning. We've had Commissioner Ebinger and Commissioner Mojo have already had theirs, and Commissioner Gross has had yours.
I've had mine.
So Commissioner Kaylee, it's you and I get to get poked here.
I've got a dinosaur Band-Aid.
Where's my sticker? Well, as, you know, while we're waiting, as everybody knows, we're entering flu season, and part of what we're doing here is to remind people that it is flu season, and it's good to get the flu shot, and we encourage everybody to get out there and get theirs.
No.
Oh, okay.
Great.
Thank you.
There might be some more in the audience that are interested.
Just want to add on this. Having walked into my neighborhood drugstore, it took about three minutes to fill the paperwork out, and they walked me back there and gave me a shot. So anybody out there that wants to do this, you don't even need to call your physician. You can just go to the local drugstore, and they'll get you taken care of.
Excellent. All right, so we'll move into our 8:35 item. We've got everybody here who's, and I do, Steve, you had yours today, this morning?
Did I have mine, Mr. Chair?
I think I saw you got yours this morning. And how about Mr. Melton?
Well, he told me to take my entire suit off, basically.
Okay, well, we won't.
Wait until after the cameras shut off.
I guess we'll forego with that.
I will get one.
All right. Kathy, and Jamie, and Becky, do you want to come up? Dave, are you going to get a flu shot this morning?
I've been working on it.
All right. Excellent. Okay. Kathy, would you like to start off?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I'll just pull this up real quick. So you all have the handouts about our case counts, both in Clay County and in Cass County. So our number of active cases in Clay County went up from last week. It was 310, and we're now at 375. Our active cases in Minnesota also went up, 21,909 to 24,587. So we're still seeing the increase. So obviously, we haven't hit our peak yet. In North Dakota, in Cass County is 755 from the week before, and then 707. So they're seeing now a little bit of a decline. They were, they went up previous to us in Clay County. So, and that's again, just this week. It can change, as Becky always states, week to week. So we can see a decrease, but they may have an increase next week. We don't know how to, it's an unpredictable number. And then the active cases in North Dakota also went down, 3912, and then this week it's 3736. And then we have our active cases by age group. So as you can see, that 35 to 39 now is 48, and then it's the 30 to 34, and then the younger age groups again, that we've been seeing, 5 to 9, 10 to 14, the 25 to 29. So we're still seeing in that, in that younger age category. Then the cumulative cases by age, and our total number of cases is 9,934. So again, went up, and cumulatively, that 20 to 24 age group that's at the highest, followed by the 30 to 34, and then the 15 to 19 age group. And then our Clay County cases per week from July through current. So you can see how we've had an increase in our cases per week. And then that is the overview from March of 2020 to current. So you can, you can clearly see that we're in our fourth wave of cases, and we have surpassed the number of cases seen at the same time last year. Okay, Becky?
Good morning. So this graph again depicts the number of Clay County deaths reported by week. We did unfortunately have another death reported in Clay County since last week. So our total number of deaths for the county is at 98. And then this graph depicts the number of COVID hospital admissions for Clay County residents per week. We have seen a bit of a decrease in the number of admissions over the past couple weeks, so that's good news. We do typically see a rise in hospitalizations two to three weeks after we see a rise in cases, so I wouldn't be, you know, overly surprised to see another uptick of hospitalizations over the next couple weeks. And then this slide breaks down the recent hospitalizations, so from August 1st until current, of Clay County residents by age. So as you can see by the pie chart on the left, the majority, 66% of those that are admitted to the hospital are under the age of 65. And then the bar graph on the right shows the breakdown of admissions by each specific age group. So the four new admissions that we've had since last week have been in the 30 to 34 age group and 60 to 69 age groups. And we do actually now have hospital capacity information for our local hospital systems. So in Fargo, which includes Ascenda, Sanford, and the VA. So the first two columns on this chart show the number of available ICU and non-ICU beds for adults. The last two columns are specific to pediatric bed capacity, both ICU and non-ICU. So you can see as of Sunday, Ascenda had zero adult beds available, both ICU and non-ICU, two pediatric ICU beds available, and one pediatric non-ICU bed available. Sanford had seven adult ICU beds available and two non-ICU beds available, one pediatric ICU bed and four pediatric nine, excuse me, non-ICU beds available. And then the VA, as of the 7th, their data lags a little bit with reporting, had two ICU beds and three non-ICU beds available.
Go ahead, Commissioner Moore.
Thank you. Thank you for getting the hospital capacity information. We've really been wanting this to help us get a full picture. Are you hearing from the hospitals in terms of elective surgeries? Are they holding off on those? Have they taken steps to slow those admissions in anticipation of ICU and COVID needs?
I guess I'm not sure, Kathy. Yeah, you know, we will have a meeting with the healthcare systems on Thursday, so I suspect they'll let us know what they're seeing. We haven't heard anything this week at all.
Thank you. And any further information in terms of setting up beds at an offsite, as we saw before at the Fargo Dome?
No, we haven't heard anything about that as, at this time. So they, we have weekly meetings now set up, so we'll maybe hear more information.
Thank you.
Okay.
And then this slide shows statewide hospitalization data for North Dakota as of yesterday. So there's currently 211 hospitalized due to COVID throughout the state of North Dakota, with 24 in the ICU. So last week, the number of hospitalized was at 157, so that number has gone up. The number in the ICU has, however, remained the same at 24. The chart in the middle shows current hospitalizations broken down by age. So there's currently four pediatric admissions. The chart on the right shows age groups of the total admissions throughout the pandemic. And then the number of, just to note that the number of COVID admissions in North Dakota right now are at the highest they've been since last December. So for comparison, at the peak of our fall 2020 surge, there were 332 hospitalized, and we're at 211 now. And then this graphic is the graphic put out by the Sanford Health System that we show every week, and so it's updated as of October 5th. The red people again represent those that are not vaccinated, and the white represent those that are. The overwhelming majority of hospitalized cases continue to be among the unvaccinated. So you can see 31 of the 32 patients on ventilators are currently not vaccinated. And these are patients across all of Sanford hospitals, not just in Fargo, but by using more numbers, that really helps to show, you know, a more consistent trend across the board. All right, and then our breakthrough cases. These numbers are updated weekly by the state health, by Minnesota Department of Health. Our breakthrough infections have gone up a little bit from last week, so we're at 1.210%. Breakthrough hospitalizations, still very low at 0.06%, and breakthrough deaths even lower at 0.007%.
Becky, you want to talk about that for a minute? When these vaccines came out, was it a year ago in February, I think? It was about, Kathy, is that about when they started?
January.
January and February?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And there was a catch-up period for everybody to get them, and, but, when, back when those vaccines were first talked about, Pfizer was the first one approved, and they said that it would have an effective rate somewhere around, I thought it was like 93%. So it seems to me that of those, of those vaccinated, and we talk about breakthrough cases, even though there are some people that seem to be worried about it, it almost seems like the vaccines are even working better than what they originally described, because this is nowhere near 7% or 6% or even 5%. So, you know, I hope I'm, you're understanding what I'm saying here. It seems to me that, that these vaccines are even working at a higher percentage rate than anticipated, based on the breakthrough. Breakthrough cases just means that they have COVID after having, being fully vaccinated. And we were told at the time these vaccines came out, that their effectiveness was somewhere in the mid 90s. Right? Am I correct in that?
That's correct.
So, you know, just to point that out, that it's, although it's alarming when we, when we see somebody that, that gets it after being already vaccinated, but the breakthrough hospitalizations is also right where they said it would be.
Right.
And the same with, with, you know, they talked almost 100% from deaths. And, I mean, we're at 99.997% effectiveness, according to this, in Minnesota, from deaths. So I think it's, to me, it's a, it's a positive sign that the, that those vaccines are even working better than originally thought.
Right.
Okay. I've said my piece.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll go on to the next slide, which is the administration and distribution of data for Minnesota vaccines. This is across Minnesota. So the people with at least one dose of vaccine were at 72.8% in Minnesota now, so continued to climb, and the people with the completed vaccine series is 69.2% in Minnesota. And then we see the breakdown of the, by age, and the individuals that have completed the full series or had one vaccine on the bottom there. Continue to see that, that 65-plus is the highest percentage of vaccinated individuals. And then we can go to the next slide, and we'll look at what.
Jamie, can I, on, on those percentages, are those percentages based on those eligible, of the eligible population for the vaccine?
Yes. So in this case, it's the 12 and over. That's who we're looking at.
Okay.
So the data has jumped around a little bit, because we were at 18 and over, and so now we're down at the 12. So that is everyone who's eligible at this time. And then looking at the Clay County clinics and the doses we've provided since the beginning of providing vaccine in January, it's 15,614 doses, and it was just 27 doses last week. I think last week was our, till 6:00 PM clinic, so we keep rotating those over lunch hour and in the evenings. And the response has been pretty minimal. We're doing, focusing on first and second doses. This last week, Minnesota Department of Health finished the protocol for boosters, so we are going to start boosters this week. But again, Minnesota Department of Health continues to say they would like local public health to focus on finding those vulnerable populations and providing the first and second doses, so we will do that as well. And then Commissioner Ebinger mentioned the opportunities for vaccine in our community are, are great. There is an opportunity for a booster for people that are looking for that. And so what we do is we continue to share with people that are calling, where they can be vaccinated, our pharmacies and our healthcare systems, as well as us. Last week, we did first and second doses. This week, what we're planning, we have a clinic on Thursday and Friday, and so we'll be offering Pfizer vaccine for anyone age 12 and over, Johnson &amp; Johnson. We continue to have that for ages 18 and over. We're offering first doses, second doses, and booster doses as well. We do have some Moderna vaccine. We're not doing a lot of that, because the requests are very minimal, like one or two doses, and we've got a bottle of 13, 14 doses. And so instead of waste that, we redirect them to the pharmacies that are accepting walk-in clinics.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. I possibly have said this before, so I apologize if it's redundant, but last week, I again was at one of our local drugstores picking some things up, and several people had come up and wanted to have their, their COVID vaccine. For whatever reason, they didn't have, whether it be Pfizer, whatever one they needed or wanted, and said, oh, just check the, check the website of so-and-so pharmacy. And I say that because I think that's frustrating for people that are finally at a point where they're either off work or at a location, and they want to get the vaccine, and then it seems like there has to be this runaround. I, when my boys were ready to get it, we went to several different, and we made it work. But I, I feel like there are people that are just going to get frustrated with that process and say, forget it. Or they'll call Clay County Public Health, and it's 5 o'clock, and it's not a night of a vaccine clinic, and so they say, forget it. So is there a way that we could coordinate better with some of those pharmacies? Or, you know, I've said before, I drove out to see my niece, and in Jamestown, on the corner, was their county public health department under a tent giving vaccinations. Have we, I know you're working like crazy, and have we thought outside the box on that piece? Because I know you have more doses available than just the 27. And coming from someone who has had a carload of kids trying to find a vaccine location, that's stressful, and sometimes people just say, forget it. What can we do?
So a couple things. The biggest challenge for us nationwide is those doses that we're all trying not to waste. And so what I did is called our local pharmacies to find out, who are you accepting for walk-ins? And so we can update that again, because that's what we're doing, is saying, if you go to CVS, you can get a Pfizer or Moderna. So we're directing them to the ones that are saying, we'll take walk-ins, because those are the people that you're talking about. We are trying to make it as easy as we can. For our clinics, we have, we're, we're overstaffed for the clinics on anticipating the numbers that are not coming in. We do use a couple of things. We use the register online. We've done a QR code onsite, so they can actually come and register there. So, you know, I guess what, when you talk about the tent, we haven't done that, except we did do that at our universities. So we went to each of them, and we did that same, and our numbers were low as well. But, but we keep trying to figure out, the, the challenge is, the frustration of people just, it's not like a flu bottle. We can just give you flu vaccine and put it back in the refrigerator. It's that wasted dose thing that we're struggling with as a nation. And so we continue to try to make it as easy as possible, but we will definitely go through that list of pharmacies again.
Well, and I, I'm not saying that I want you to sit in on the corner now that it's getting cold. I'm just trying to think creatively. I mean, we have a DMV at the Morehead Center Mall with a lot of people that come in and out, and, and for instance, when we were doing the flu shots here, I think somebody that hadn't planned on getting a flu shot saw it was available and just did it. So maybe it means we set, set a site up at the DMV, and folks coming through could, could stop and do that? I don't know.
Time to do that where people are. Well, that, we will definitely talk about that, our planning team, and see how we can do that as well. The other thing, just to share with you, we are also planning, we're gearing up for flu clinics now, so we're doing both COVID and flu at the same time. And we've gone to a couple of our senior centers. We're going to be inviting our county employees this week for clinics on Thursday and Friday. And then we'll continue to work with our partners, seniors, and other businesses that we routinely vaccinate for flu, but we're trying to provide both opportunities at the same time. So that will be during our clinics, that will be this Thursday at the Family Service Center, 10 to 2 on Thursday, and 9 to 1 on Friday will be our clinics. And then just to kind of share with you, the saliva testing site in Morehead continues to be open. Minnesota continues to stress the, how easy it is. I saw there was an article in the Inforum as well, you know, highlighting that it can be easy and quick to test. We, we had a, as the week of September 26th, we had an 8.6% positivity rate, and then the number of tests conducted for the week was 805. So we're seeing a climb, but again, we're a little bit spoiled in terms of our response wait and rate in this community, and people are frustrated with their not getting their results back in, in 24 hours. So we've asked for an additional day, and our clinic is now, the saliva vault testing site is now open on Sundays as well. I don't remember the hours.
Do you think there's, Jamie, do you think there's a difference now in people going for their, to get these rapid tests? You think there's a difference now versus a year ago, where people, a year ago, just might have wanted to know if, if they had it or not? Because it was, there's so many uncertainties about the, people being asymptomatic and that type of thing, versus now, maybe is it more people who are suspicious that they might have it, versus just wanting to know if they have it?
Yes.
Maybe that could be why, why our positivity rate is higher, because.
We're picking up.
Based on those that are being tested.
Mm-hmm. And we are encouraging people, if they're, you know, attending big events, you know, they should test. So at that time, we were just saying, if you've been exposed or you have symptoms, go get tests, because we were overwhelmed with testing, but.
Because we used to have like 1,500 tests.
Yes, exactly, exactly. But yes, we are encouraging people. If you, if you've been to an event and you want to get tested, do that. There's a lot more requirements for testing for employees and for travel without symptoms. So we're picking up those without.
Any, anything else, Jamie? What's your, anything else for, so we also have on here to review the COVID-19 mitigation strategies and masks, that fun topic. We know, we talked yesterday at a, at one of our meetings, and we, we would like to review this still on a weekly basis to see where we're going, and, and what the indications are, what's happening within our own campuses, and if we're seeing any troubling signs or signs of improvement that are going on, and are there changes to mitigation strategies? You know, and I guess we kind of, Kathy, we kind of look to you, you for that too, for what your thoughts are.
Yeah, you know, based on the numbers, and as we, as we follow this week to week, you know, we're, we, we haven't completed the surge for our fourth wave, so it would be unlikely that, you know, this would be an appropriate time, once we see the decline is what we're looking for. So the number of cases, and also decline in, across Clay County and in Minnesota, and then as, as Becky reviews all of the hospitalization data, you know, we also look at that, what's happening in our community for our hospitals, you know, surge in capacity. So because the numbers are still climbing, it, it just, it probably is not warranted at this point in time.
What are you?
Change our policy.
What are you hearing over at, I'm particularly talking about the Family Service Center now, because, you know, before, during the higher episodes of this, we had, we also had that person at the front, and, and I think that, that person just made sure that everybody coming in was masked and doing their thing, and that's no longer there. So I'm just, I'm just wondering if, you know, what we're seeing there, and in terms of the public coming in there, are they, are they following along with, with what we need to have done?
We don't have, Mr. Chair, we don't have the security individual, but we do have an individual that's at the front all the time, every day of the week. And, and she's posted there, and, and she certainly will tell people that, you know, if they don't have a mask, that masks are required, and we also have it on the door as well. But she's there every day, Monday through Friday. She sits in that corner office, so she's kind of keeping tabs on that, so.
What happens if we have somebody who's, comes in and they don't have, and they just?
Well, usually, if they're coming in, they're, they're coming in, all of the entities in the Family Service Center building now, even tenants are requiring masks. So if they're coming up to the workforce center, they require masks, so they, you know, they'll ensure that they get them a mask. They're coming in for public health or social services, we ensure that they have a mask, and the dental office has required masks the whole time. And CAP LP, as Commissioner Mojo mentioned, they, they're requiring masks. So everybody is requiring a mask, so in order to get into the offices, they need to have a mask on.
Okay. All right. So I guess the message from you is just.
Another week.
Yeah. Commissioner Mojo.
I appreciate, you know, your referral, Kathy. I, I think my questions that I posed last time we talked about this was what our policy as a county looks like. What does it look like? Does it, is it 100% what public health recommendation is? Does it look at percent positive within employees? Does it look at vaccination rates within employees? I know that I had attended the PIC Committee, and we talked a little bit about that, to make sure we sent that survey out for staff. I had had Darren go back and look at what staff positivity numbers look like over the last 18 months, and so he was able to basically get out any time we had employees that were sick out with, with COVID, so we have the percent infected of that. You know, I'd like to, to have a solid policy that takes all of the five or six data sets that we can look at as a benchmark, so we know what a policy looks like going forward. And I am not quite sure we still have not created something like that. And I'm not really looking at you so much as, you know, administration and HR. You know, I think we need to have something solid, so that we're not grasping, grasping numbers that may look back at as inconsistent. I want us to be as consistent as possible. So certainly, I think that, that's something we need, we need to do. Secondly. Secondly, we have an ARPA committee that has funds available that we've used in the first round of cares to make sure that we had sets in place that protected staff, protected the public, had, you know, barriers and, and all of those parameters in place. And we've not had any more requests from departments on how to make areas safer. And, and if we're going to masks, that's telling me that we've, we've not necessarily done the best we can to make sure that staff and the public are safe in terms of having their business taken care of. So, I would encourage our departments to look at that and see if there's any other ways we can help to improve these transactions to make them safer.
So, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Mojo, we, you know, we did, they did do all of the Plexiglas, you know, at, at front desks. The reason why masking is still, the Plexiglas doesn't take the place of masking nor masking take the, take place of the Plexiglas barriers. Those are the front desk people that are just interacting initially with the people. But we're doing a lot of face-to-face and when we do that, you know, we, we have to have masks on, both with the persons that we're serving and then our staff because, you know, we're meeting them in various areas or Plexiglas is not available or, or would not make sense. So, it's kind of the combination of both. And as, as the, someone with the epidemiology background, Becky talks about, we have to look at everything that we're providing. So, we're looking at what's happening in our community. That's a benchmark. What's happening in Clay County? What's happening in Minnesota? It's not just so much what's happening with our employees, although important or interesting to, to know. But our people are going out into the communities and out doing other events. So, really, we're protecting the whole, well, by, by our mitigation measures, at least we're protecting for when they come back from all their events or when they're going out to all their events. So, it's a combination of all of those factors that we're taking into account. And Becky, maybe you could add to that if you want to talk about what Commissioners Mojo questioned about, you know, what factors are we looking at?
Yeah, I think it's important to look at the, the whole picture, community-wide, not just building-wide or county-wide. You know, looking at, our community spread right now is extremely high. So, the CDC would recommend indoor masking. You know, people, our employees are going in and out. They go home at night. They're intermingling, intermingling with family, friends, other social events, and then coming back here. So, I, I guess I would caution against just using, you know, our numbers internally. I think we need to look at the, at the whole picture at our hospital capacity and then also our, our numbers.
And I understand, I understand that and I appreciate that. But I, I have a hard time when so many members of our communities are filling stadiums and amphitheaters. And, you know, I understand that our numbers are going up, but to me, it seems like our vaccination has also done its job because people are out and about more and at the schools and et cetera. So, I just, you know, I understand the position of the board may be, but I think I still encourage our departments to look to see how we can make things safer as we move out of COVID, whatever that looks like.
Maybe a follow-up to that. And I know, I know Steve, you have your management meetings a lot. And I, and I, I guess, how often do you have those? Is that?
We meet every other week, Mr. Chair.
And I, I, I guess I wouldn't, I think that would always, should still be a good topic to get feedback from management, you know, as part of your meeting and, and what's, what's working and what isn't. And, and because we want to beat this and get out of this as quickly as we can. And I hear, I hear some employees are frustrated with, with our policy as well. And it's, I think we just need to find a solution quickly. Okay, so we'll be back. You'll be back next week. And I, I don't think we're gonna, we're in a position to, I know that your original motion was to relook at this in two weeks. And we've, I think that's today. And, and I don't think, based on public health's recommendations, I don't know that there's, this is the time to adjust that. We'll look at next week again.
Okay.
And hopefully those numbers will start trending down like they are nationwide and we can see some improvement.
That's certainly our hope.
Okay. Any other questions for public health? Yes, Commissioner?
Do you have one question? So, you just said, you know, when the numbers start trending down. But when we look at the numbers, they do kind of go up and down and up and down a little bit. I guess I personally would like them to, to see them going consistently down for at least some period of time because we might have one week where it looks lower and, and then it goes back up again. So, something to keep in mind.
I thought I used the word trend, but maybe I didn't. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have request to fill vacancy for deputy for court security. Sheriff Empding, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Thanks for having me this morning. I do apologize for the scheduling snafu last week at the board meeting. So, thank you for accommodating me this week. I am requesting to fill a deputy position. We have a deputy that is retiring. His last shift is going to be the end of this month and then he is going to burn some vacation up to the end of November. It is currently our court security sergeant. So, I would replace a, I'd replace a deputy position and then put out a promotional process for a sergeant for the support services spot or, or our division there. There would be slight savings for 2021. The savings in 2021 would be relatively insignificant, to be honest with you because it's only one month and we do have some payouts that we'd have to provide Sergeant Alderman when he does leave. But there'd be a significant savings for the 2022 budget, upwards of about $40,000 for the 2022 budget savings for this, for this request.
Certainly sad to see him go. He's been a great employee for the county and certainly is a smiling face whenever you enter the courthouse. So, I will reluctantly make a motion to approve the request.
Second, and second on Ms. Ryan, he'll, he was, he's a good troop and wish him best in retirement.
Agreed. Okay. Motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Evering. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. All right, Sheriff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd also like to add that we do wish Ryan the best in retirement. He is one of those guys that just does things and he doesn't ask any recognition for it. One of the things he does and nobody really knows about it is he, he keeps socks and gloves downstairs at that area in court security. And if somebody comes in from the public and they don't have socks and gloves in the wintertime, he provides that to them and he pays for that out of his own, own money. So, it's very good to have him here and he is going to be greatly missed.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Best wishes for him. Okay, we'll move on to information sharing and redistricting county commissioner districts. Good morning, Mark.
Good morning. Okay, so I'm going to talk to you a little bit about what redistricting is and how it looks and how it's going to work. And, but first of all, we need to talk about the census. When I talk about redistricting, there's really two county departments that are heavily involved in this. One is the auditor's office, which is Lori's office. They're the agency that does elections and all of that stuff. And then the other one is my department, which is GIS, because we handle all the data that it takes to make all this work. If you remember, over the last several years, our, we worked pretty hard to help with the census process, with the boundary and annexation survey and the local update of census addresses and the complete count committees and all those things that we did. And then the pandemic came right as Census Day arrived, which was April 1st, 2020. However, in Minnesota, we had the highest self-response rate in the nation, which is a pretty awesome thing to have. And in, inside Minnesota, there were some counties that did a lot better than others. And you'll notice that Clay County exceeded the state's average. So, what that tells us is we had a really good response initially from the census that, so that there wasn't so many that they had to follow up with. And that gives us a lot of confidence in the numbers that we're using. Because everything in, when it comes to redistricting is based on a census. And actually, the census was invented to support redistricting. There's a lot of different levels to that. But, so at, at the end of the count, we came out with Clay County's new population as of April 1, 2020 is 65,318 people. Gave us an increase of 10% over the last decade. So, we've grown quite a bit as a county. These numbers come to us from the State Demographic Center and as part of the release of census data. The census releases their data in pieces. And one of the first things they release is the, is the data that we can use for redistricting because there's a lot of things that play off of that. Over the next year, we'll see more census data coming out and it'll have more stuff on it like, you know, income and race and all those kind of other things that we use for other purposes. But initially, they roll out just the census numbers so that we can start to work with those. So, as redistricting is being done across the entire nation, there's some specific rules that every organization has to follow. And we have this book that the, that the Minnesota Secretary of State's office produces for us to use. And we follow it diligently. Just a side note there that says Lori Johnson and I, this is our third time doing this. So, we, we've, we've done this before. We got some good ideas on how to make this work as efficiently as we can. So, based on the redistricting guide, there's a bunch of different levels of districting that will take place. It starts with congressional districts at the state level where the US districts are. And the way all the districting works, all the way down from congressional districts down to local precincts, is the goal is to try to make them as even as they can population-wise. So, they'll divide Minnesota up into the congressional districts and draw those lines. And then, as we go down through the jurisdictions, we each divide it all up as best as we can, either based on jurisdictional lines or other lines like city limit boundaries, those kind of things. So, we follow the, the rules in this, in this guide. It tells us pretty explicitly exactly what steps we need to follow. Commissioner districts are set, there's as many as there are you. So, there's five commissioners. So, we basically take the county, divide it into five, and we try to make sure that all those districts are even as far as population goes. There's, this is, tells us specific rules of what we have to meet, which means they have to be bounded by precinct boundaries. So, we can't just draw lines wherever we want. We have to follow an actual precinct boundary, which oftentimes, especially in the rural areas, is a township boundary or a small, small city boundary, those kind of things are precincts. We, the commissioners need to be contiguous, which means they all have to be connected together themselves. And then, we try to make them as, 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 well, close to the same as we can population-wise. They have to actually be within 10% of each other as far, far as population goes. So, when the census data comes out, we take and apply it to our precincts. And then we start looking at these questions, which are, says, do we need to do redistricting? And so, the first question is, are any precinct boundaries moving? And we know that that's going to maybe happen inside the city of Morehead because Morehead's going through a precinct, a redistricting process of their own where they need to have election precincts that all have about the same population and wards. So, they're doing that internally, drawing their lines. And, and that can cause precinct boundaries to move. And when that does, we have to move our commissioner districts to match those. We also look for things like variance in population. Are we more than 10% from the average? And we try to make them as equal as we possibly can. So, when we take that and compare that to the existing precinct boundaries that we had, this would be the precincts before they've been readjusted. These are the population numbers we end up with. Now, if you take 65,318 divided by five, we, our target population is 13,064 per commissioner district. Right now, we are close on many of them, but we've got a couple that are outside that. 10% of that is 1,306, which means that the lowest number we could have is 11,758 or the highest would be 14,370. So, we, all of our districts need to be inside that. So, we know right now, based on the existing precinct boundaries, that we may have to make some adjustments. Now, this isn't exactly where we're going to be because we don't know what Morehead's going to do with their precincts for sure. But once, it gives us a good guess on how we're going to have to do some modifications to where those district boundaries are. So, District 3 is South Morehead, which is where a tremendous amount of growth has been happening. So, its population's been going up. All right, so, excuse me. The process is, we take the precinct boundaries from all the jurisdictions when they, so they have to do their piece first. So, really, the legislature does its piece, the cities do their piece. We take all that information and then we start applying census data to that to figure out what numbers we have in each of those precincts and how they relate to our commissioner districts. We use our geographic information system to do that. And it's an incredibly good tool at that. It makes, gives us numbers very quickly. We can say, what if we do this? Or we can look at a lot of different possibilities really simply and accurately. We don't have to worry about making mathematical errors. Once we figure out what options we may have to ma, to meet the criteria, we'll come back to the county board because the county board ultimately decides what the precinct should, or the district should look like. And then you, we'll have a meeting again and you, we'll present to you what we've come up with and present you some options. I'll show a couple of screenshots here. This is actually from our geographic information system. The colors on the map, our commissioner districts right now, the red lines are precinct boundaries. We also have to keep in mind where you live. We can't district you out of your district or, you know, we can't move a boundary in such a way that you're no longer in your district. So, we keep that in track. So, the stars you see on the map are your residences. So, as we're looking at moving boundaries, we need to make, keep that in mind that we don't accidentally-
Got to zoom out.
Yeah, you, you didn't fit, but.
I never do.
I zoomed into here because in honesty, when we go look at moving our district boundaries, it's going to be in this area. Because this is where the population is densest. We're making one, picking up or dropping a precinct is going to make the biggest change. Interesting side of that is precinct three is highest, precinct four, or District three is highest, District four is lowest, but they don't touch. So, we'll have to look at some-
Except for that-
That little spot.
Morehead town.
Yeah, way up there. This is an example of the census level data we've got. This is a zoomed-in place over by MSU, kind of, what, MSUM, sorry. What, we have census level block, or block level census data so we can actually see what populations are. That's how we can figure out how best to, you know, what the populations are. Okay, so commissioner districts are described by their, by, by their precincts. So, this is an example right now of our current districts, one and five, of how they're described. So, at the end, what we'll end up with is something very much like this. That says this district consists of these precincts or wards. And this may change is what might happen. But that's how it gets sent in at the end of the day, as we say. Each commissioner district consists of, and there's a big list of precincts. And if, if one of the rural districts is a whole list of townships or small cities are. But that's how they look. One thing that comes to play in this is as we adjust boundaries on commissioner districts, if the number of people you represent changes by more than 5%, it may force you to have to run for office again, even though you may not be up for office. We don't know if that's going to happen for sure, but it's a possibility. And I wanted to make sure we mention it. The threshold is 653 people. So, if, where we start and when we end, if that number's more than that, then we're going to have to look, then, then that commissioner might, would be, have to run again in 2022.
That happened to me in 2010.
Yes.
Everett, correct?
Yeah. So, yes, that, that's a real possibility that it could, depending on what we end up with. At, when, we'll, we'll look at, we'll have a start number and number and when we just, and it kind of is pretty-
Yeah, Commissioner Mojo?
Mark, since, because of COVID, the census got pushed back a little bit. So, in, in looking at the next general that will be in '22, is that what, what the thought is? Is that you'd have it redistricted? So, when the terms are up anyhow?
Yes.
It'd run in '22.
Yeah. The, our timeline for having to do this, we have to have this redistricting done by April 26, 2022 for the 2022 elections. For the 2022 elections. That's when we have to be finished. So we've got quite a bit of time before we have to be done. But for those commissioners who'll be running next year, you'll be running with whatever your new boundaries are, but it might be one of the others that may end up, depending on whether we have a 5% change.
Well, and the reason I asked is, you know, I know we have our filing time, and I want to make sure that the public is aware of any lines that may have been changed in terms of.
Right.
Public awareness.
And that's exactly why this date is April 26, because the filing starts in May.
Right. Thank you.
That's why it's going to be, everything's going to be set by then, so people can figure out who's going to run. So it's a, there's a process to it, and we'll keep you informed as we move through it. Any questions?
So does the county, and maybe this might be a question for Lori, but does the county sit in on precinct discussions within cities?
We don't directly, but we do provide summaries coming up. Some advice, then, right?
We do not sit in on those, but we are already in communication with them to make sure, once they set their precincts, then we'll go through all of that data. And we may, they may have to change their precinct lines depending on if it works for us with our county commission districts.
Okay, so the county still has some say in, ultimately.
Right. And we try to make as few changes as possible, but sometimes it just doesn't work out unless we move a precinct line here or there.
Well, and they would have to keep council members in their precincts as well, correct? So it's not just.
Right. It's a little different there, because they go by the wards, by wards, not necessarily precincts, while we are using the precincts.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, let the process work. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Lori.
You're welcome.
All right, next we have information sharing on cybersecurity. Technology Service Director Rory. Good morning, Ray.
Morning. Morning, commissioners. This morning, I'd like to discuss our, October is cybersecurity month in the industry, and today, we're just going to kind of do a high-level overview of Clay County's, where we're at, our security posture a little bit, and just to share some information with all of you. This month, we're going to be kicking off our own campaign with employees to, you know, increase awareness. There'll be some flyers, some posters around as well, as well as training opportunities to attend. You know, we can do one-on-ones with the departments, with the employees, if they're curious on their, you know, what their risk score is, or, you know, how they sit with the rest of the county and their peers. One of those, one of the ways we try to mitigate our risk is multi-factor authentication. I'm sure all of you are aware of this. You know, we've been doing this for about a year and a half now, two years, where you have to check a text on your phone or get a prompt to sign into your email or other computers and things like that. The most interesting piece of this is this chart here. So we use a product called Know Before. And this is almost a security awareness product that we subscribe to. And this, as you can see, we started in late June of 2019. And you look all the way to July of 2020, it looked like we made really good progress on reducing our risk score. This is the, these scores are the average risk score amongst all employees in the county. And as you can see, there's a nice decline there. We got down to about 13.8%. And then in July of 2020, it spiked up. And this is because the Know Before product changed how they calculate that risk score. Prior to July, the scores were based on what, say, your job title or job function is, just like the name, say administrator or commissioner, you know, that type of thing, social worker. Now, in July, it really affects the job function, say, if you're a manager and you have, say, 50 people under you, your risk score is automatically higher than, say, another manager that has, say, 10 people under you. So just because you can affect so many of those around you, if you get an email and it starts phishing out to your employees, now it's more of a risk, because you have so many other direct reports underneath of you. So as you can see, we're, it spiked up, and now we're starting to climb a little bit. So we're really trying to kick off this campaign to get those numbers down and try to level that off and get a nice decline. In the next, the next three weeks, we'll be doing some training opportunities, I think, once a week for the next three weeks, and really encourage everybody to attend that. But you'll see some emails coming out this week about that. That's all I have. Any questions? I guess one other.
Commissioner Ebbinger. Yes, as commissioners, where do we fall in the food chain on this? Are we, as one who occasionally makes a mistake on this, am I hurting the cause a lot more because I'm a commissioner than I would be if I were a social worker?
Quite possibly. So I don't have those numbers, but I would definitely encourage you to reach out to us, and we can, we can run through that.
Okay.
And I guess one other slide or.
Judging by the fact that I had to retake a test means that we weren't doing very well. As commissioners.
One other document I have here is this email exposure. This 100% exposed, that's a little misleading. We can generate a report, and based on public breaches, say, of companies like LinkedIn or, you know, other online services you may subscribe to, we just plug in our email domain here, and that runs a check on any breach that's ever happened that they're aware of, and it shows how many people were included in that breach. So it's very important that, you know, if you're curious, we can get you, you know, if you're curious, if you're on this list, we sure can, we can get you those numbers or those sites of where you're at, and just make sure you change your passwords. And we highly recommend, you know, doing the multi-factor authentication on any site or service that supports it, you know, banking, personal, and anything.
Well, I got busted for phishing.
And that's why we go through those.
EH, EH phishing.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions, Rory? Thank you, Rory.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a request to fill vacancy for correctional officer, Justin. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, commissioners. Yes, unfortunately, I'm back, asking to fill a full-time position for the correctional officer position, positions within our annual budget. It is part of our DOC staffing plan. The individual that we're replacing is moving out of the area and just looking to get into a different line of work, and so we're requesting to fill that position.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Ebbinger. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Okay. Justin, good luck.
Thank you.
All right, next, this is an item that, A Place for Hope. We're looking at some ARPA CARES II funds for a food shelf. We'll start with Steve.
Yeah, thank you for teeing that up, Mr. Chair. As you mentioned, the ARPA, our CARES II committee, has recently met with Executive Director Darrell, I'm going to say it wrong.
Lozvik.
Lozvik. Yeah, he presented to our group, and we wanted to, you've seen Darrell before in CARES, in our first CARES project, and he's done some wonderful things here in our community. And so he's here today to present his new idea.
Good morning, Darrell.
Good morning. Okay, we have recently decided to go with a full-fledged food shelf at A Place for Hope. We did it temporarily during the COVID, and it turned out to be very successful. We distributed over 250,000 pounds of food in the last year, and just being in our small space that we have for our mental health, which we weren't using at the time because of COVID. So as we transitioned now, going back into our, basically our health area, our mental health area, we really needed to separate the two entities, because many of the individuals that are in the mental health side do not want their identities known. So we transitioned, we found a spot in our existing building, about 2,400 square feet. The problem is, we had to retrofit it. The space that was given to us was previously a car garage, so we had to grind the floors, wash the floors, seal the floors, that type of thing. As we got into it, we needed to put in heating and air conditioning, we had to run a lot of electrical lines, as we moved 15 refrigerators and freezers over, and we had to purchase some shelving and more storage shelving for around the perimeter. Along with that, we decided that we really needed to look at a walk-in cooler and freezer, that's one of our biggest asks. But we're throwing some food away, or quite a bit of food away. We can actually take more food from the Great Plains Food Bank. Even yesterday, we're not usually open on Mondays, but I'm usually there working, Great Plains stopped by because they had more food to give us. And that's been happening quite regularly, just about every day. I think I had given you some statistics through August, but I'll kind of update that. Through September, we had a very large month in September, where we brought in just about 39,000 pounds of food and distributed that. We had 716 families registering, and that was also the same thing as 1,440 individuals. I couldn't do this without volunteer hours, as I'm the only paid person, and I'm putting in quite a few hours. But we did have over 800 volunteer hours last month, so it's been very nice to see that. So as I presented to the CARES II committee, we were looking for about 10,440 for the heating and air conditioning, 6,720 for the electrical to rerun the electricity in the room, 36,185 for the walk-in freezers and coolers, 4,900 when they run, when they actually do the electrical work for the walk-in freezers and refrigerators, 2,700 for food shelving, and approximately about $6,000 to pay for rent for the 2,400 square feet that we're
So this was talked about extensively at our CARES, and we agreed with your request on all of these items, that they were appropriate and worthwhile to do. The one, the one thing that we did talk about was, we are restricted based on dates. I don't know if Steve has talked to you. And I think that everything that you, from item 1 through 6, now, obviously, some of those haven't, you haven't done yet, but all of those would have had to have been done after March 1st. Is that correct, Steve? March 2nd?
We didn't, we didn't do any of this work until mid-June area, so we're fine.
So our committee certainly recommends that we approve items 1 through 6. Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. I think for the public's information, we did fund a van through the prior funding ask. And we're hopeful that if this were approved from this board, it could free you up to maybe hire someone to drive that van with additional funds, obviously not these funds, but to work with our smaller, smaller cities within Clay County, to make sure that if you do have an excess, there's a way that you could transport some of those goods. I know some of the smaller pantries are limited in terms of freezer space, as you have identified that being an issue as well, so that hopefully you could collaborate with them to get some more produce out to them. I just think this is a great opportunity. Thank you for seeing the need. Commissioner Kaylee and I serve on the CASC Clay Food Partners Committee, and we've really talked about this, is there are people that are ready and willing to donate, but not often are there areas or places for those food donations to go. Just your volunteer numbers alone in the last month are phenomenal, but also the individuals that you're serving. I think that those numbers are an eye-opener for a lot of people, that there are some food hardships that are happening within the county and our community. And I just really applaud you for your work in identifying that and helping to solve an issue. So thank you.
We work, we try to, we allow each individual to come in and pick out their own food items, because we have so many different nationalities here. And if we prepare food boxes, they would get items that they wouldn't use. So that's one of the reasons we have a lot of volunteers, because we go one-on-one with them with set appointments. So I thank you, and I would really invite you all to stop over and take a look. And we do work with Churches United. When we have extra stuff, we call them. And sometimes they call us, but usually, we call them more than they call us. And we'd be more than happy to work with the smaller food shelves in the county.
Trying to recall what the name of this place was. It changed its name to a place.
It should be Social Connections.
There you go. That's what it was.
That was before I was there.
Okay. Mr. Kaylee.
Thanks for coming, Darrell. I did get a tour from Darrell of the facility and the work that they're doing there. And yeah, I would just echo his invitation. I would encourage my fellow commissioners to stop by and see the good work that's happening, and the volunteers that are serving, and it's a really great benefit. And it is a pretty decent location, too. It's on a bus line. One thing I noticed, though, is there's not like a great big sign out front letting people know that you're there. So maybe that's something we could be talking about.
Well, we do have a sign that is down, because they were working on.
Oh, okay.
Well, so I just talked to them the other day about trying to get that back up again.
There's a lot of apartments and stuff near that area, so it is walkable for a lot of families, too, or walkable, bikeable, push your stroller. So thank you for all of your work.
I did tour a previous location of this, and that was before it was, and again, that's when it was Social Connections. And for our new board members, and maybe even, it's been a number of years, I think, but we used to have several of your members who would, or residents who used your facility, were courageous enough to come before our board and talk about their experiences and the need for the facility. And I don't, you know, I think our new commissioners certainly haven't heard that. And the only thing, I guess I understand, and I haven't seen your new facility, I'm anxious to see what you're doing with your food pantry, and I intend to get over there to see that. But overall, I think it's been very good for this community for a long time, and your people that go there for the support that they are looking for is really beneficial to this community, so. And again, I want to point out that we, as a CARES committee, have, we certainly strongly recommend that this go from a request to an approval, and we'd like to see that today. So Commissioner Gross.
I was just wondering, I mean, this is a great thing that's happening here, but are we in competition with grocery stores? We just hand out food to, what about the grocery stores that are trying to make it, especially in small towns or something like that? like that? A grocery store is really struggling, and here we're handing out, I don't know, I guess it's free for people to come and get it.
That's true. We do have the income guidelines, but right now with COVID place, they're quite high. But we actually get all of our stuff through the Great Plains Food Bank, which actually comes from the grocery stores. I'd say probably 90% of our food is from Hornbacher Stores. In the smaller towns, I don't know exactly how that works there, but like I said, we've, we'd be more than happy to work with them, and whatever we can do to help the food banks, and hopefully not hurt the grocery stores. That's not our intent at all.
So people from smaller towns can come in here and grab, grab whatever, pick up food and stuff like that?
Right. And we've had people from Detroit Lakes, Yulin, Hittardall, wherever. We've actually had people from the North Dakota side. We really haven't turned anybody away. It's anybody that needs food. We record everything with zip codes, and then we have three different categories, which we report to the Minnesota Department of Health. It's like up to 19, and 19 to 60, and 60 and above. So we report all of that stuff to the Minnesota Department of Health, and we give it to the county also. We give it to Rhonda quarterly, all of our numbers.
And again, our, our investment into this isn't the food itself. It's, it's for the facility required, and, you know, based on, I just want to assure people that the, the CARES dollars that we're using were focused on Clay County, and it's, and, you know, it's for, it's the investment for people in Clay County. But now whether somebody comes there and actually gets, gets the actual product that we're storing and for them, those are, it's open.
Any other counties? I mean, he says they can come from Detroit Lakes. Does Becker County get these same funds, or, I mean, do they have a?
Well, it's, it's kind of interesting. What really got me into coming to ask you guys for funds is I met with, we have counterparts, and we belong to B.C.A., which is Becker, Clay, Otter, Talon, Wilken. That's where part of our funding comes to us. And when I was visiting with them about what we were doing, and one of the members there said, "Well, we, we would never do this because we don't have the manpower to do it." Well, they've, they've got five other people on their staff, like one of our counterparts. It's mine, it's our place, it's me, and then I have a part-time person that works with the arts and crafts and that type of stuff to keep our mental health people with something to do. They said, "Well, this, this belongs in your county. This should be, come to your county, family health." So that's when I came back and talked to Kathy and Rhonda, and started discussing this. So I don't know, I think they've, they've actually started to work with, I think it's the state level, which is TFAAP, which is the Emergency Food Assistance Program, which we work with here, and I talked to you guys about that when I've been at your board meetings. I think they're actually starting to work with them, so they are getting some food there to give out, but they don't seem real willing to work with something like we're doing. And that's, you know, that's their prerogative, I guess. I felt kind of taken aback by it, but when I see the need, I would think it's going to be that way down there, too.
Is there any contribution at all made by the people picking up food? Is there any requirement, if they have income guidelines? You said you take down their information. I mean, is there guidelines where they have to pay a percentage?
No, we don't, we don't get into that, no. If they want to do a donation, though, they can. I've had a few people, and most of the people that have donated have been actually members of a Place for Hope. And it might be $10, $25 or something occasionally.
I think most food pantries operate that way, don't they?
Right, yep. The emergency food pantry in Fargo has gone to, you can come in once every two months, I think they're looking at once every three, where we do allow them to come into our place once a week, if they have the need.
Well, I think this is important for us to respond to a need. As someone who has had to use food stamps once in my life, I think that it's important that we understand that food insecurity happens in all, all avenues, in all ages, and hopefully these folks can come back to pay it forward at another point. I think the, the biggest thing to do, to make sure that people understand is, there is an outstanding amount of food that the grocery stores cannot sell for whatever reason, and we don't want that food to go to waste. If there's an ability to make sure we can connect that with people. And so the fact that you're coming asking for refrigerators is, is a direct response to what we're hearing. I think it's also important to note that you were able to work with your landlord, and they have basically given you the space free of charge because they also know what that need is. I, I know at most of the grocery stores countywide, there's always a grocery cart after you check out that has the opportunity for you to donate a bag or two, and so I think that these people would love to shop at grocery stores, but unfortunately, sometimes they can't. And so to allow people to, to stop in whenever they need, I think is the best that we can do, and is well utilizing funds.
Commissioner Kaylee, and then Commissioner Ebinger.
So Rory's here, too, and I was wondering if maybe he could comment a little bit on how having food and healthy food affects the overall health of the community and a, and a family.
Thanks, Commissioner Kaylee. Yeah, you know, hunger and health are inextricably connected. There was a time, maybe 15 years ago, where hunger and health were, they were, I don't know if they were adversarial, but they weren't working together. It was either, "I just need to eat calories," or "Let's focus on health." And thankfully, those worlds have come together, both in the Cass-Clay Food Partners that you're part of, and also there's a Cass-Clay Hunger Coalition. And so we know that food insecurity and hunger is a determinant of health. If I'm hungry, I'm not operating at a high level, I'm not functioning at a high level, I'm at greater risk for chronic disease. And so this is a predictor, and it's, it's upstream, and we like that it's upstream. Darrell found an opportunity, and he sees that, and seized that. And so this, this could be a protective factor that would help people in the future. When you're, when you're not hungry, it allows you to work on higher-level needs, and I think this contributes to that.
Commissioner Ebinger?
Just to echo something. I've, I've worked in a lot of different communities and different environments in my career before I retired. Worked here for 12 years. We have hunger issues in our community, and we also have people that respond for those needs. Hornbacher's, as you pointed out, is very generous in their support of the food bank. When I went through the Great Plains Food Bank, a lot of the produce, a lot of, a lot of items that are brought in are sent by, by Hornbacher Stores. They also, as, we, we have the opportunity for individuals to make contributions through that business, too, both cash, when they have a, an annual drive for that, or you can pick up items in the store and leave them as you go out, as, as was pointed out earlier. I'm excited about this. This is the first I've heard of it. I'm familiar with, with the, your organization earlier. I've not had a tour, but I'll be out there, and this is exciting. This is an opportunity. We have kids in this community that are hungry. We have kids every year when the schools let out for the summer. There are people that are trying to figure out how to get meals to them, and these are families that are coming in. They don't have the money to pay for food. That's why they're there. And people in this community are generous enough, and organizations in this community are competent enough to where that needs being addressed. I think this is exciting, and I appreciate you doing that.
Thank you.
All right. We have a request. What's the board's wishes?
I would move to approve these requests as presented.
Second.
Okay. And then, just for the record, I'd like to clarify that they all fall within the date guidelines of, of the requirements, if that meets with your motion, your second. Okay? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose the same. Motion carried. Darrell, you're, granted your request.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, next. Dave. Justin.
Good morning.
Morning.
We've got before you a grant agreement and a resolution for bridge bond dollars to replace a small wooden bridge up in the kind of northwest part of the county. It's on our County Road 106. I'll let Justin maybe give a little information on the project and the dollar amount.
Yeah, so like Dave said, the bridge is on County Road 106. Bids were opened on June 8th, and Riley Bros. Construction was approved as a low bidder. The grant agreement amount is $109,697, and then the county amount for matching funds is $5,010. And as required by MNDOT grant agreement and resolution is required to use these bond funds, and today we're just requesting approval of the bridge bond grant agreement and resolution.
All right.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Mojo. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose the same sign?
The plan is to get this structure installed this year yet.
Motion carried.
Okay. Sorry. There's, there are three of them that are tied together in this contract, and for some reason or other, the steel for the culvert itself has been on back order for months and months. Supposedly, they're supposed to be constructed or built yet this month, and then hopefully, if the weather holds out, we'll get them put in, so. See how the things come together.
Dave, a question for you. The signs that we ordered for County Road 3.
Yes. Do you have any information?
Eight to 12 weeks, and that was three weeks.
Eight weeks a week?
Yep.
Wow. Okay. So we're putting those in in frozen ground, probably?
Well, you'll have the bases in, correct? You can do the bases, can't you?
Yeah, we do, we do got a little bit of work to figure out exactly how we're going to do that. We've done a couple of different ways. Do you have everything figured out on the base?
Not yet. I've been looking around town, and some are on Telspar, and some actually have a concrete base, but we're kind of hesitant to put a concrete base in the, in slope of a ditch, just because if you break, or if that thing breaks off, then what do you do?
Do we have a meeting this morning yet?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Committee reports. Commissioner Mojo, would you like to go first today?
Thanks. Last week, I attended the County Lands Committee meeting. On Tuesday, we had a discussion of all of the different properties that the county currently maintains. A gate had gone up at one property that had been a little bit of an access issue, so hopefully that will address those concerns. And then we talked about putting a property up for sale on Elkton Township, I believe, in January. This one was previously for sale, but we pulled it because there were some encumbrances that we needed to look at, so I think everything looks good there. We talked a little bit about the Felton Prairie in terms of hayland lease, if we were going to renew that, which I think it sounds like it, on that parcel that Shaw had been hayin', Carl Shaw? Okay. That day, I also had a meeting with the AMC Extension Committee. We had a discussion with the state regional directors, a discussion on trends that we're seeing in our individual counties, how we are dealing with remote work environments and policies, and where we see needs and opportunities for extension to continue to work and provide programming in each of our own counties. So it was really good to hear from several different commissioners that were also on the call to see trends that are similar to Clay County workforce. Definitely is a major issue in all of those counties. I also attended the MetroCog Executive Committee meeting last week. We had the general business that was approved, minutes approved, and looked at the 2050 demographic forecast consult consultant selection. We did go with SRF on that recommendation. Talked about the status of their addition of an assistant planner recruitment. There again, workforce is an issue, but with a growing metro area, definitely have a need for an addition of an assistant planner. And then talked about the metro-wide housing study. Talked about the status update with that. As you recall, that was part, partly included in our preliminary budget. Those funds will definitely go to benefit Clay County and the metro area as we continue to look at needs and growth. And then yesterday, I attended the ARPA Committee, addressed some of the issues already. Talked about our PDQ for the cultural liaison position that we desperately need with our, within our county. Clay, Darren has done a great job of consulting with different school districts and counties to see how those positions are framed. A recommendation will likely come from that committee within the next month or so. Just to make sure that we have someone who's a great information source to as many people as possible. And then we also talked about the detox, the status of the grant that we talked, had applied for, hoping to find out by the end of this month. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Ebinger, I know you were out of town most of last week. Maybe you want to report on your Arkansas football team?
My heart is still broken. I wouldn't have gone for two. It's good to be back here. I've got meetings scheduled next week I can bring to you. Thank you for, for rubbing the salt in that wound.
That's all in good sportsmanship. Commissioner Kaylee?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, on the 6th, the Subcommittee of our Early Childhood Initiative met, and I'm happy to report that we have hired a new coordinator for that group. Her name is Jody Jordette. She has extensive background working in the early childhood community as a childcare provider, working with Safe Kids for Sanford, and a variety of other positions. So she comes with great knowledge and experience, and just a passion for helping kids live their best lives. So, welcome to Jody. I'm excited to work with you. That same day, the Morehead City Planning Commission met, and that was a joint meeting with the Park Board. We looked at the comprehensive plan and, and where that's at. Some of the, the big ideas discussed in the Morehead City comprehensive plan at the moment are to transform downtown Morehead into the heart of the community, and some different ideas around that. To connect neighborhoods to parks and trails and provide multimodal access. To integrate mutually supportive land uses in redevelopment areas and infill developments. To embrace resilient environmental solutions, and to build and nurture local businesses. There was some discussion at the end of that portion of the meeting as well about how our different entities are communicating, because Morehead is doing a comprehensive plan, the county's doing a comprehensive plan. I believe Dilworth just finished one, so wanting to make sure that all of our entities were communicating with each other and that these plans fit together for the good of the broader community and the county.
What consultant is doing that plan?
This one is by, I'm sorry, I don't have that up, and left my brain.
That's all right. You know, I, I know that that's been part of our discussion at our comprehensive plan meetings in the county. MetroCog typically has done, I know they did the City of Holly, and they're doing ours. They're, they're great to make sure that they're collaborating on those resources and discussions, but important to bring up.
Yep. And Robin Houston, the Morehead City Planner, said she's been talking with Matt quite a bit, so they're working together on that. If citizens would like more information on what's going on with that, they can check out Onward Morehead, is the name of that comprehensive plan, on the city's website. Also, at that planning meeting, we did have one, one thing, so there was a vacation of- one, one thing. So there was a vacation of, sorry, my brain is just not working this morning. I didn't sleep enough. Okay. There was the road with the cul-de-sac and a bunch of properties around it. And this was in the Riverside Acres subdivision. So the landowner actually owns all of the lots around that. So they vacated that easement for the road and the cul-de-sac in there, and they're just kind of combining it into one big lot. And we don't have any details on what the use might be for that, just they wanted to vacate that cul-de-sac. So that was approved or recommended for approval there. Okay. Then, the next day, Thursday, the 7th, we had our Joint Powers Meeting. And Sheriff Empting was there and talked about the different ways that the Sheriff's Department addresses mental health needs, both in the community and internally within his department. Nicole Reno was there, too, and they talked about a lot of the different trainings that they do within the Sheriff's Department, including de-escalation, implicit bias training. They're looking to add autism awareness training in the near future, so that they can better respond to folks with those needs. So thank you to Nicole Reno for always being such a good trainer and willing to take these new things on. We also discussed the intergovernmental retreat, which will be coming up in January, the last Friday in January. That same day, I also met with the Children's Mental Health Local Advisory Council. This is the first time that group has met since May. And there's been a lot of changes with retirements and things that have gone on. So we were just really discussing some updates from agencies as well as what is the future of this group? Could it be combined with a different group? So there's some further discussion going to be happening about that with social services and Rhonda and some other folks. Yesterday, I attended some of the Indigenous People Day celebrations in Morehead, which ended with a powwow sponsored by Morehead Public Schools. It was a really beautiful celebration of the Indigenous Peoples in our area. And it was wonderful to see some of the talent of the dancers of our Morehead Public Schools students and singing and drumming from our Indigenous communities in the area. So thank you to all who planned and participated in those events. That concludes my reports.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross?
Unless you want to listen to a long health report. I had no meetings that I attended. I do want to look at this upcoming meeting events, the Township Officers Fall Meeting. I see it sounds November the 9th. And I think I said November 15th last week. Did something change on that, or?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gross, no, we must have the wrong date. We'll confirm.
So the correct date is the 15th. That's what I have in mind.
That's what I reserved the community center for, so.
Just wanted to scare you.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Very good. No, no reform. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, for myself, on last, the 5th, I did have a conversion executive meeting that, actually, I was unable to attend that because I was out of town. So I have nothing to report on. On the 7th, Clay County Joint Powers, Commissioner Kaylee reported on that. I want to echo thanks for Sheriff Empting and Nicole Reno for being there for the discussions. And we're in the process of training two people that are going to be training the trainer. So we're going to be able to, or those folks will then be able to train others within county departments or county offices, which is a good thing. I do want to point out that in November, we're, our plan is to have a Morehead and Clay County Comp Plan update. So Steve, I think it, if you wouldn't mind, maybe if we could ask Matt to be available to give a little update on the Clay County Comp Plan to that group. And that's right and early in the morning. Yesterday, I had a ARPA CARES II meeting. Commissioner Mojo had reported on that. I, I know we acted on the one item today. There were several other requests that were brought forward. They just weren't available in time. One of the issues that was presented yesterday that Commissioner Mojo did not mention was our county attorney. Brian has now, I guess, with the recent, they want to, the backlog that had occurred, there's a lot of pressure now to get caught up. And so I think next week, our group did agree with Brian that, that we'd be looking at maybe a 13-month period for additional assistance in his office with an attorney to help with all of the backlog. And the courts are now wanting to get those caught up. If I'm not, if I'm saying that correctly, Brian?
Correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So, so that's going to be coming forward next week, as well as a few other smaller items as well. But the one for Brian would be for a 13-month period. And I think that's important that we help him with that. I believe that concludes my report. Steve? Oh, yes.
Chair, I just had a follow-up to Commissioner Kaylee's, the Comp Plan piece. Matt Jacobson sent me a message. He does sit on their study review plan, so.
Okay. All right, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday, I participated in the County Lands Committee that Commissioner Mojo has addressed. That afternoon, I participated in the Northwest Regional County Administrator Association Meeting. We discussed vaccine mandates, levies. I did provide a form, just some levy information from some Minnesota counties. Talked about opioid settlements and also challenges with their correctional facilities and hiring. On Wednesday, worked with Colleen to, I'm sure the board packet was ready to roll because on the 7th and 8th, was at MACA Conference. Again, during that time, we talked about workforce issues, criminal justice reform. We talked about our legislative priorities. And MACA is looking at adding some professional guidelines for county administrators in the state that we discussed. On the, I did make it back on the 8th to participate in the open house for the Morehead Career Academy. What a wonderful facility to see. Certainly going to have positive impacts on our community. On the night, I met with Kirk Rosenberger and MCIT. We reviewed the draft, draft resource agreement that, that Brian has put together in regards to the operation and ownership of the Resource Recovery Facility. We received some very good insight and are going to kind of put that, put that to use and kind of come back with, with MCIT again at a later date. Participated in the ARPA meeting that has been covered by both Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Mojo. Also, just of note, again, vaccine clinics this Thursday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And on Friday, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., Pfizer will have first shots, second shots in the boosters. And they'll also have Johnson &amp; Johnson. Would just note that if you go to our webpage, we have openings both on our Planning Commission and Board of Adjustments. Matt Jacobson is looking for citizens who may be interested in serving. And so if you go onto our website into the spotlight section, you can click a link to learn more on that. Rural Cities Meeting is going to be held here this evening from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And our District Four Meeting is going to be November 5th, 8:00 a.m. to noon in Fergus Falls. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Brian, anything else? Colleen, anything? All right. Return. Thank you.